We're all here, but we're gonna have a real call anyway.
All right. Commissioner Mum?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Roth?
Here.
And Mayor Neely?
Here.
Will you all please join me in the flag?
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you. I'm gonna bring up something that I would've normally brought up at the end during the mayor's discussion, but we were very, uh, we had a very nice pleasing activity that occurred in Oregon City. Tadashina is the sister city of Oregon City. And eight students came to us. We had also one of the people from their, uh, their school district. That's not quite what they called it. We also had an interpreter, as well as a, um, American teacher who actually teaches English there, and they all came out. And, uh, we talked a little bit about the governance of the city, but, um, because they have come during the jug handle project and they're all, they're all staying at homes in Oregon City, we decided we'd want to, uh, we'd wanna make sure they saw one thing outside of City Hall. Actually, they saw several things. They did go to the-
There was a group in my classroom.
Yeah, and it would've been the same. They went up to, to the high school, I think maybe one of the middle schools too. They actually visited the senior center before they came over to City Hall. Uh, but those, those are kinda the traditional institutions, so we made sure they took a ride on the elevator.
Okay.
And, uh, just to take care of that. But they brought us this wonderful gift, and, uh, I think, uh, our city manager there has it. It doesn't, uh-
I have the description of it.
Yeah, he's got the description. I'll let him read it, but I can briefly say something about what might, to everybody that looks at it, look at, uh, essentially what they were saying, this, this represents a phoenix.
Oh.
And everybody might look at that and think, boy, they're made of colorful wires. But then David Frazier is actually gonna tell you what it's made of.
That's a mizike, which is actually made of paper, originally used to tie back the hair of sumos.
Wow.
And it is a, it is a phoenix, which in their culture is a symbol of happiness.
And, uh, they stated, actually, the, the paper is exported for specific purposes, and that artists in our region had actually, uh, used this kind of paper. Uh, but, uh, some, I'm afraid to touch it because usually I manage to break things, so I was hoping, I was hoping David Frazier would do this, but, uh, I'm going to, I'm gonna ask him to take it now before I-
Very nice.
Yes, it was, it was a-
Thank you.
A great time.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I, I didn't know how to judge it. I, uh, uh, they, they, um, the students, although they take English, they, they, they really don't speak it, and so, uh, we weren't able to get much of a dialogue going with the students. Uh, I got them to laugh, but I doubt if it was, but I was saying, it's probably, it's probably, they're just laughing at me.
When you told them you were gonna give them a test at the airport, they-
Yeah, you got their attention. We handed out our, our Trail News there, current copy of our Trail News, and in it I wrote a letter, uh, a, a, a thanks, sort of a letter, on, on the jug handle project. And, uh, I told them that either David or I would show up at the airport, they're taking off on Sunday during our jug handle period. Taking off on Sunday, and, uh, I suggested either he or I would be there to test them on, on my letter. Anyway, with that, uh, Cormac is going to come up and speak to the March on Meals Project, um, it's a, uh, and it's, uh, issue, it's the, the Wheel, uh, the Meals on Wheels Project. And come on up.
(Inaudible) I'm replacing on my phone. Sorry, I have laryngitis, so you're gonna have to bear with me and don't make faces. Um, anyways, one of the reasons-
That they came to the senior center is we have, in our lobby, um, a very nice display case with, um, a lot of artifacts and things in there from Tadashina, so it was, you know, nice that they came. But I don't know if everybody knows, you know, that it's there, so. Anyway, um, good morning, or, excuse me, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Claire Matt, and I live in Oregon City. I come before you this evening as the Program Assistant for the Pioneer Adult Community Center, and to announce that the month of March is our annual March for Meals. March for Meals is a national campaign to heighten awareness of the growing problem of senior hunger, and to work locally to help alleviate it and to seek volunteers to help us in our quest. I was originally supposed to do this the first meeting, so it would've made a lot more sense, but, um, it's still good information. And this is, um, the slide that shows the March for Meals. The Oregon City Pioneer Adult Community Center opened in 1979 as a multipurpose facility that provides services to adults 21 and over, seniors, and those with disabilities in Oregon City and West Lynn. Our most notable service, I have not done PowerPoint before with this, so I'm gonna try to keep up with it. Um, our most notable service we provide is our Meals on Wheels program. We have nine Meals on Wheels routes in Oregon City and West Lynn that delivered over 30,000 meals in 2011. We have one of the largest Meals on Wheels routes areas in Clackamas County. A dedicated crew of volunteer Meals on, Meals for Wheels drivers use their own vehicles to deliver meals, and with the skyrocketing price of gas, it is becoming a financial hardship on many of them. Some of our drivers are seniors themselves and have limited income. In addition to the meals they deliver, they also spend a little time with the client and make sure they're doing okay, so it's a safety check. For some of our clients, this is the only, um, constant outside contact that they have. In addition to our nutrition program, in addition to the Meals on Wheels program, our nutrition program serves a meal at the Pioneer Center Monday through Friday. We refer to this as our congregate meal, and in 2011, we served almost 11,000. We serve one of the largest moontime congregate meals in Clackamas County, and our two buses provide service to one of the largest transportation areas in Clackamas County. We offer many other programs and services for our seniors and qualifying disabled. We are a resource for helping seniors obtain Medicaid, food stamps, protective services, fuel assistance, and free legal assistance, to name a few. We provide much need, we provide, excuse me, we offer many other programs and services for our seniors and qualifying, oh, we, sorry, I got lost. We provide much-needed socialization through exercise and art classes, a weight room, and games such as bingo and pinochle, and a live band every Wednesday. We are the only city facility that offers, um, that fundraises, excuse me, year-round for our Meals on Wheels and nutrition programs, and to provide improvements to our center to make it a more enjoyable place to come to. We have many community partners that have stepped forward to help. BCT, Hagens, B&amp;B Leasing, Buels Impression Printing, and Clackamas Federal Credit Union, to name a few. Local organizations such as the Rotary, Lions, Kiwanis, Clubs have also contributed annually to support our efforts. We are out there selling Christmas wreaths, entertainment books, and Italian sodas at the concerts in the park, and this is to help do some of the things that you see here. We are also, here are also some additional slides that show all the extra stuff we do around the community. There is no dedicated recreation, recreation coordinator in the city, so the Pioneer Center and the pool staff do all these different activities, and you'll see a lot of these just we do here and there, all over the community. Excuse me.
How did that end up on top?
I wonder.
How that got on the accident?
Conditions will worsen as baby boomers numbering over 76 million enter their later years, as the contin, the economies continues to struggle, and as government funding for senior programs keeps getting cut. We could not do what we do without all of our wonderful volunteers. You'll see some familiar faces up there-
Oh, yes.
-who worked a total of 14,642 hours in 2011. At $10 an hour, that amounts to $146,420 in salary alone. We have a very hard-working staff of only seven. In comparison, the Milwaukee Center has a staff of 21, and has a smaller transportation and, and congregate lunch program. As I mentioned before, the March for Meals campaign helps to bring a focus on what is being done locally to help fight senior hunger. The average cost of a Meals on Wheels meal is $4 for the food and container. Clients donate what they can, but it only covers, on average, about 79 cents of that cost. We are working hard to bridge that gap, but we need the community's support to do that. Our local March for Meals campaign centers around plastic donation containers like this one and that one pictured, excuse me, that have been distributed to businesses in Oregon City and West Lynn. They have a distinctive little mark, uh, sticker on them with a marching drummer and informational statistics on each, either side that helps relate the crisis of senior hunger. Even though the month of March is over, half over, I'm here this evening to encourage everyone to watch for these containers and be generous in your donations. Please remember that your small change can make a big change in an Oregon City or West Lynn seniors' life. Thank you. And I do also have a, a three-minute video, um, and if, if there's enough time, I'd like to show that.
Okay.
Yeah. This is where I'm gonna hopefully do this right. And then- Screen, oh, that's good. Okay, so just- Bye.
That's very good.
That's very cute.
In Oregon City, we wear blue vests, but we still do the same, so.
Is the Optimus Club now gonna have to, we're gonna-
Uh, we're a friend of youth.
We could do a good year today.
Oh, that was, I'm sorry. There we go. Okay, that's enough.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Claire.
Well, I'm very pleased to have our Metro Councilor, Pearlotta Colette, to talk to us about the climate, smart communities, the efforts of Metro. I, I would've been more pleased, but I found out she's actually, today I found out she went actually to Lake Oswego and West Lynn before she came to us. Other than that, I'm pleased to have you here.
Well, and this, this afternoon at lunch, I spoke to the Lake Oswego Lions Club. I'm right with it. And normally, I'd be giving you my quarterly update, um, but we decided, since I've been here a few times in the last several months, talking about blue hair, and that, we would focus it tonight, just on the climate scenarios. But I did want to make one invitation, and I think you all got a copy of this, or it should be being passed out. Michael Friedman, who's an internationally famous speaker, will be at Metro, uh, Thursday, April 19th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, and I would encourage anybody in the audience or behind you, the dais up there, to join us. He is really amazing, and inspiring, and has had a lot of experience with revitalizing not just, uh, and this one talks about remaking strip commercial corridors, but also just transforming downtowns. And I think Oregon City is becoming really the example of what you can do with a downtown, an old historic downtown. You have tremendous success stories. I would just encourage you to have your local business people or yourselves join us for this event. He's really great. That being said, I wanna now just focus on the, the climate scenarios work. And some of you might remember, a couple of years ago, we had a large meeting at the Oregon Convention Center, where we asked people from planning commissions, city councils from around the region, um, what kinds of measures they thought they would be willing to take, and which they thought would be the most important measures to help reduce our greenhouse gases in the region. In 2009, the state legislature asked the Portland metro region to do, um, climate scenarios, to actually look at what combination of measures we could do in this region to reduce our greenhouse gases from, especially from light vehicles. We take a little bit more comprehensive look at it, but, but the light vehicles is the measure that, that we're being compared to. So with the advice that we got from the group, uh, that couple of years ago, we've run now 144 different combinations of measures. And you, I, we handed out a little booklet here on the findings from Phase One of that process. This is, um, cooperative effort between the state, the region, our local governments. You might see inside the front cover, um, from Oregon City, your engineer, Nancy Crushour helped us out. We had people from all of the local governments that, that had people who could participate. Clearly, some don't have planners or engineers, um, help us do this study. And among the things that we compared were things like completing neighborhoods with mixed-use development, increasing transit use, um, keeping the urban growth boundary tight or not, uh, include increasing bike travel and, and parking strategies for downtowns. We looked at a series of pricing strategies, things like pay-as-you-drive insurance, gas taxes, road use fees, carbon fees. We looked at marketing incentives, things like the Drive Less, Save More campaign, and some of the, the Smart Travel Advice programs. We looked at, um, roads, expanding roads, expanding road capacity, and managing incidents, like accidents, getting people out of the way quickly. We also looked at, um, the mix of fleet and new technologies, like, uh, electric vehicles, plug-in vehicles, those kinds of things. And actually, the state did us sort of a favor, I think. I'm not certain that this is a favor, but they made the assumption that about 70% of our greenhouse gas reduction would already be achieved because we would have more electric vehicles on the road, and the target date here is 2035. So by 2035, they thought we would have a lot more electric vehicles, a lot more fuel-efficient vehicles, probably smaller vehicles. Um, and they assumed that that would take care of about 70% of the, the greenhouse gas reduction from light vehicles. When we looked at these 144 scenarios, my, when we first started this process, I didn't think we could reduce greenhouse gases enough to meet the state target. By 2050, the state target is 75% reduction in greenhouse gases from 1990 levels. So that's huge. The target we were left with after they took the 70% off was about a 20% reduction, um, which gets us to a, a figure, 1.2 metric tons of carbon-
Per person?
Per person. And I don't usually use that number because, A, I'm not good with numbers, and B, I don't want us to focus on the numbers, because I think they're, the measures that we wanna talk about are really the measures that get you to the city you want, anyway. So we tested 144 combinations of these measures, and, surprise to me, 93 of the 144 actually get there. We can reduce our greenhouse gases significantly by doing the kinds of things we're already doing. The compact communities, when I looked at your, uh, local aspirations, and you talked about more development, more mixed use, more transit use, uh, redeveloping in, in specific places where you, you felt that parts of your city were underutilized, those are the kinds of things that are gonna get us there as a region, if each community understands the, the goals and can basically provide some political leadership to help us get there. So of the, the 93 combinations of, of, um, measures, if you look on page 16, you can get a sense of what some of them are, like, um, of, of all of them, really, community design, things like increasing transit, having more people living near where they work, uh, having people have transportation choices. That was by far the most effective, uh, measure or set of measures that we could take. The, probably the least promising in terms of reducing greenhouse gas had to do with expanding road capacity. There may be other reasons to do that, but from a greenhouse gas perspective, that's not the best strategy. Um, and so that we looked at, how, how do you combine various degrees of, like, doubling transit or tripling bike ridership? Those are the kinds of measures that actually get us to our greenhouse gas reduction target. So Phase One was really looking at, um, what are the range of possibilities? What are the, what are all the choices that we could think of to get us there? Phases, and we completed that, and this is the report, this is the findings from Phase One. In the next phase, in Phase Two, and one of the reasons Kim is here tonight, Kim is the project manager, Kim Ellis. Um, when we have a very tough, big, complex, multi-year project, it always lands on Kim. You might remember, she was the leader of the regional transportation planning process, which took-
Four years.
Four years. This is also a multi-year process, and Kim is the person who can keep track of all the moving parts, including all the people in our communities who are giving us ideas about how to reach these greenhouse gas targets. Um, so Phase One, we've completed, and we're now in Phase Two. And Phase Two is where we really want to talk with our communities, to say, okay, we look broadly at what the region can do, but what can you and your community do, and what do you and your community wanna do? How will meeting your local aspirations help us reach regional climate strategy? But more important, really, is how does it help you with walkability, with your, your citizen, the health of your communities, the economic development in your communities? All of these fit together as part of the formula, and all of them will help us reduce greenhouse gases. So we need to hear from you over the next year, but tonight, if you have specific questions about meeting these targets, but over the coming year, we will be talking more with you, and, and I know some of the communities have asked us to actually come out and do a workshop with, like, your planning commission, your neighborhood leaders, um, your city council as well, and some of your staff, to actually look at what kinds of things you can do in your community that will have economic development benefits, health benefits, but also climate benefits. So what are the kinds of things that you think might be important for you to be doing over the next, well, as part of this whole long-term process? But in the next year, we just need to know, what are you, gonna be your priorities? What's the best way to, to talk with you? What's the best way to get the information, both to you and from you? Um, you, some of you wanna add to that?
Um, I guess a couple of things I would add, um, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you all tonight. Part of what we're working towards is by the end of the year, to have, uh, the Metro Policy Advisory Committee, which Mayor Neely, um, sits on, and our Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation, make a recommendation about three scenarios that we should develop and test further next year. So a lot of the work that we're doing is really trying to help inform narrowing from that whole broad range of options that we evaluated in the first phase to a smaller set of approaches, uh, that we can take, that's really building on things that you're already doing in your community and other communities, uh, in the region, uh, but, uh, beginning to, to narrow without making a final, uh, decision. And that, we'll do a lot more analysis and evaluation, uh, next year to help inform the, the final decision, which is not until 2014. Uh, so there is, we're still early, um, and, and trying to build information to help inform, uh, a dialogue and discussion, and, uh, the policymakers in, in making their recommendations to staff.
And all of this work will fold into the regional transportation plan, the next one that we do, and, um, in the next set of land use decisions that we make, which will in turn be turned over to you, to be, uh, woven into your transportation system plans and your comprehensive plans if they need changes. So it's not that we're just doing this sort of academic strategic planning thing that we then will put on a shelf. We really will want to implement whatever strategy we find is the, is the most, um, successful from, from the perspective of all the outcomes that we've looked at from a region. So the most successful in terms of helping people have transportation choices, helping us have more walkable communities, um, a more vibrant economy, leaders in climate change is the obvious reason to do this, but also clean air, clean water, and, and regional equity, that, that people around the region feel like they are, that they're equally benefiting from the, the kinds of things we do as a region. So with that, I want to make sure, if you have questions for us tonight, and if you want us to come back and do a workshop like we've talked about, uh, we're still trying to figure out if we can fund something like that, and, uh, if we can get help from the state to fund it, but we, it seems to be what I'm hearing, at least from the cities in my district, they seem to be really interested in having sort of a, a hands-on community effort to identify the measures, the kinds of steps that this community would take.
I have a couple of questions.
Please.
When you talk about the 1.2 metric carbon dioxide emissions, uh, target, and then it says that that is equivalent to 1.112 gallons of gasoline, is that a reduction of 112 gallons, or is that a total consumption of 112 gallons per capita?
It's a total consumption.
Per capita.
Per capita.
And then my second question is, many metro light systems, light rail systems, do not allow bicycles. And I know, and my experience with Macs is it gets more and more crowded, it's more difficult to have the bicycles on there. How are we going to deal with that? Because we want to do bicycle advocacy, but it does cause some problems on-
That's a really good question, and it raises a whole set of questions around TriMet. TriMet, as you know, has, has major funding obstacles that they're dealing with. They're reducing service, at the same time that we're saying, for climate reasons and for public health reasons, we need you to be increasing service. So we're actually talking with them over the next month or so about ways that we can make sure that, um, if they can't do it right now, that they, that a priority for them as they, as the economy picks up and they start having new revenues, that they start adding back that service. Because really, the best strategy in here is to double or even triple transit service and transit use. So the question about having, being able to, um, have bicycles on, on light rail is really a critical one, because, um, a lot of light rail stations are gonna have more bike parking, and Portland will have a new bike share program. So people will be able to bike to the light rail, leave their bikes there, take light rail downtown, or through most of Portland, and use a bike share program. But for communities out here, where you don't necessarily have either bike share or, um, even access to light rail, it's gonna be another, it is gonna be an issue, because right now, the trains are pretty, getting, especially with $4 gas, they're full. I mean, the, the buses I take and the trains I take, I mean, they used to, there used to be a lot of room, and now they're, they're all packed, almost all the time.
Even at lunchtime.
So it's, it is a really important issue, and we haven't really got an easy solution yet. One, I know there's been talk about maybe having small cars that, for just bikes, or things like that, but we don't really have that as an option right now.
Okay, thanks.
Attended today, uh, the mayor of, uh, Tuolton calls for the, the mayors from throughout the metro region, and this is a major point of discussion at that particular meeting. In fact, it was the only point of discussion at this particular meeting. In fact, it was the only point of discussion at this particular meeting. And there were various opinions that were put on. One person wanted, one of the mayors wanted to go and he was trying to call his state representative and ask him to undo the state law that mandates this and so forth. So there's some reactive positions that were put forward, but ultimately, the discussion centered around inviting somebody from the metro staff to come and speak to a group of mayors specifically. And you'll be hearing that request.
Yeah, we're excited to do that.
The Mayor Cornelius, who is chair, will probably ask for some specific person to come out to speak to us. The concerns, of course, is what's going to be mandated at the cities and from this particular standpoint. And really, it's the state that is said, these are the targets. I had one question too, even though you didn't want to use numbers, you mentioned the 20 percent. And was that a reduction in greenhouse gas contributions of vehicles?
Light vehicles.
Of light vehicles. One of the points came out that really the, even though we've got very much a car culture, that's, that isn't, vehicles are not the major contributor to greenhouse gases. Buildings, inefficient heated buildings and so forth contribute dramatically and so forth. And of course, I think it's a harder thing to tackle. It may be something that we can tackle in terms of new construction and so forth, but metro seems to have focused on vehicles.
That's what the law told us to. It would probably not have been our druthers, but the, the state legislature required us to look at just small, and not all vehicles even, just small vehicles, small trucks and cars. My guess is the freight lobby was stronger than the small trucks and cars lobby.
I think so.
You know, airplanes contribute to greenhouse gases as well. But this is one that, for one thing, I think this is really a useful one to pick on because we can, particularly in this region where we have a history of successful regional planning, we can take it on, and, and as the 93 scenarios demonstrate, we can do it, which is, really was news to me because I just thought, we can't possibly move quickly enough and do enough right things to, to change, to reverse climate change. This tells us that we can, at least from motor vehicles. And I think that there are a lot of, I used to work, I worked for 14 years at the Northwest Power Planning Council, and so I worked a lot with energy conservation, renewable resources. I think we can get there on, on the energy side as well. But when we did our inventory of greenhouse gas contributors region-wide, the biggest chunk was really the stuff that we buy and throw away. And it's really about smart shopping, recycling, not throwing things in the landfill, and that is a tougher one. That is really about product stewardship and, and being conscious about what you, what you buy and the products you buy, and where they come from, and how you use them. And that's one that we, we don't have a mandate for, but it's certainly something we take on at Metro through the recycling programs.
Well, it's convenient because there are a few people in that group that seem to be anti-metro, but if we can blame the state, it'll be a lot easier.
That's always my question. They made us do it, honest.
I do have one question. And the state is mandating that? Is that, is there funds available with that from the state?
The state did help pay for the study work, the scenario planning work. We also have representation on a statewide strategy that's developing, you know, what they're going to do next, what they're actually going to do when we have our scenario work. And at least what I, when I sat on that committee, I don't anymore, but when I sat on it, I was really lobbying strongly for funding for community outreach.
Yes.
For implementation. I mean, communities may want great things. I mean, Oregon City wants to do great things.
Absolutely.
Love to have your downtown just like that, really made into this totally redeveloped and wonderful place. And you find, as we all have, that it's expensive.
Yes.
And things like just the infrastructure, the water sewer systems, the roads are extremely expensive. So I don't know that the state mandate to do the planning will go beyond that to, I mean, I know some of the mayors have said, what will you do if we don't get to 1.2? Well, that's why I don't want to focus on it because we, there really isn't, that, that's not the direction we should be going. The direction we should be going is saying, what are the other reasons to be doing all these things? You probably all have seen that cartoon that shows, you know, we did, we did walkable neighborhoods and reduced people's time in commuting and cleaned up congestion and gee, what if climate change isn't real? Well, we will have still reduced congestion, reduced the cost of your citizens living in their homes, and, and made your communities more walkable and healthier. So there's a lot of good reasons to be doing this work, and I think the state mandate is, if anything, the, the last reason to do it.
I, I mean, I recall just 15, 20 years ago, in the, in the climate change discussions, there were a lot of climatologists that questioned whether man was having any impact. Now there are a few. I mean, I think there's sufficient information that has come in to indicate that we really need to, to change what we're doing. And, well, I mean, we're not, we're probably not going to reverse it or reverse it in the long term by any, anything that we're doing here, but we hope we can reduce dramatically our contribution to the effects of climate change.
And I think, you know, the, the United States is probably one of the last places on the planet to, to be doing this. We, you know, you've probably heard on the news, we use a huge portion of the oil in the world, and because of our lifestyle, we are probably the most wasteful nation on the planet. And yet, we're the last nation to take climate seriously. In Europe, in Scandinavia, in Asia, all around the planet, they're doing far more than we are doing. If we can just start and take it seriously, and in this region be a model, which we are for the United States, we're not like a world model, but in the U.S., this region is a model for doing things in, in smart ways. I think it's, it's absolutely critical that we take that step. And the good news to me, the best thing about the scenarios work is it's showing us that we can do it, that we can actually meet these targets, starting with small vehicles and then moving on to other things. If it, if we'd learned from, from this analysis that there is no way, no matter what we do, that we're going to be able to reach those targets, that would have been really discouraging. That would have not been good news. But to find that the majority of the measures, of combinations of measures, actually get us there, that these are things we can do, they're not that hard, they're things most of us want to do anyway because they're about making our communities safer, healthier, more efficient, cleaner, prettier. I mean, all of these things are part of, of what we would do to also have the climate benefits. So it's, I mean, I understand that the mayors are reacting to being told to do something. My husband's like that. I mean, you know, I tell him to do something, it's the last thing he's going to do. I have to wait until it comes around to being his idea, then he's fine with it. A lot of people react that way. I understand, you know, why being told by the state or metro or anybody else that you have to do something. And that's why we're trying to make it, it's not about telling you to do something. It's about, you've already told us, these are the things you want for your community. If we can help you achieve them, it will also achieve the state goal.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming up.
Thank you.
Even if we weren't the first ones who came.
I know. It was a scheduling issue. Oh, and I wanted to also tell you and anybody in the audience, we have this, one of the first things we did was we surveyed who else is doing good things around the country and around the world. And it's on our website at oregonmetro.gov/climatescenarios. It's called the Strategy Toolbox, and it really looks at a lot of the measures and where they've been successful, who else is doing this kind of work, because we're not alone, and, and what have been the, the outcomes and benefits of this work. A lot of people have found this much more readable than the findings report. So I would encourage you, if this is a subject you're interested in, to just go online to oregonmetro.gov and search for the Strategy Toolbox, Climate Scenarios. Okay?
Thank you.
Come to this, you'll like it. This guy's great.
Okay, with that, we're going to take any citizens' comments for anything that is not on the agenda, and I'll switch back here and see if we've got anybody on the list. We do. Will Larry Morton and Tom Guile please come forward?
Yes, sir.
My name's Larry Morton. I reside in Beaver Creek, Oregon, but I have three pieces of property in downtown Oregon City where it's truthfully, it should be considered where I actually live because I am.
Spend a lot of time there, huh?
The other one, I just visit there at night. I had a little situation come up recently that kind of concerned me when I was contacted by another gentleman that has a business in downtown Oregon City right beside me that pointed out in connection with the website of City of Oregon City in connection with the historic downtown Oregon City, that had a 3D presentation in connection with a mixed use development that was spent money on and drawn up. Looks nice, but it happens to be on my property. At least I own half the property that that little development was theoretically going to be on. Now, a few different things concern me out of that, specifically one, at least after meeting yesterday with Catherine Comer, the manager of the Business and Economic Development of Clackamas County, which I believe is the one that handled the little project being done. She told me and the other people that were at the little meeting we had at the 505 Tavern that she had been told that there was full approval by all the property owners on this site that, for this study to be done, which from what we could find out, there was no approval from any of the property owners. Maybe one piece of property right beside the 505 that at the time, I believe, was owned by one of the developers that owned some property in downtown Oregon City, which curiously happened to be the same developer that three years ago tried to buy my property from me. So obviously, it seems as though he had some little secret information ahead of time, which would have been quite nice if I'd have been cooperative, but I'm probably the world's most stubborn person, you know, to be. So I did not sell the property to him because I have no intentions of going out of business anytime soon. So I'm curious where the ball got dropped because she was told that Mr. Lloyd Purdy assured her that he had approval from the property owners for this to go on. And so I'm wondering how that happened. He didn't talk to me in my sleep, so I guess I want to know where that idea came about. Secondly, unlike General Motors being backed by our president at the time that they declared bankruptcy, to keep them in the public opinion feeling like people should buy cars from them, I don't have that. So if my competitor decided and had seen that information on the website and had linked it to their website saying, gee, don't go to Larry Morton's Transmission Service because, gee, his shop's going to be a totally different development, he's going to be out of business soon. I would imagine you could understand where trust in my business that's only been there 34 years, but, you know, it shouldn't be misconstrued on the internet that I'm about to not be there.
You're correct.
So Catherine Comer did get a hold of Lloyd Purdy, I guess, and another gentleman in Oregon City and asked for that to be taken down off the website, which initially didn't happen. Actually, it got put on the front page of the historic downtown listing, so it got bigger, not smaller.
Oh, my gosh.
Seemed to be the wrong direction from what I was looking for.
Yes.
It is now, I believe the link is down, but I don't know why it got there in the first place. If, if, and then I guess I wonder, is there behind the scenes some thought of the city itself that's trying to get this going? I understand, off and on, I've been a little thorn in the side of the city. So, and I understand my, my property has a great view of the falls from the upstairs, so I can understand the reason for why that would be a fine little spot, but it's not available at this moment. So I want to be sure that there's no move going on.
I'll need you to get your name with the city recorder. She's got it.
Same band, yes.
Okay. That's fine. Actually, he's not on our, on my screen.
And citizen comment I had on there as well.
Okay. We'll get you on both of our, yeah, that's fine. I have no problem with that. Go ahead.
Good evening, Michael Burman, Oregon City. Eighteen, 19 months ago, I, I came back to Oregon City. I grew up here, I lived here, I went to Mount Pleasant Garden in Oregon City, was active in Oregon City. I left here in 88. And, and I came back and purchased a small business on Main Street, and, and it's a challenging time. The owners of the, the building I purchased included a first right refusal and an option to buy, and they're old family friends and would like to see me take over their building. She's, has some medical issues, and, and we were looking at accelerating our purchasing of the property. In order to purchase it, I was looking at what I was originally had thought was an ally for myself on Main Street, which is the organization, Main Street Organization, which is a nonprofit affiliated with the city, but its own entity. I'm looking at the website, and I'm looking for grants, links, things like that, and the link that I found was buried four clicks in, was the super block that they called. It was, it was put on, it was done May 2 of 2011, and has been buried there. I was surprised to see that. I've, I spoke to Lloyd Purdy several times throughout the year, many times throughout the year. We've, we've talked about the need for parking and, and had looked at other spots for parking garages and other developments, and in the process of these conversations, it was never brought up. It was a big shock to me to see that, especially the, the scale and magnitude of it. You would imagine, I thought, it might even be, would have been in the paper even. This was proposed by the county. The county proposed it to eight different cities, Canby, Estacada, I believe, Sandy, I believe. Every city had written signatures from the property owners to give permission to do this on their, over the overlay of their, of their property, obviously for these, to protect themselves. This one was signed off by Lloyd Purdy and with the assurance that he had gotten the permission. I did find that they don't have, the county doesn't have record of any of that, and they were, they're seeking it from Lloyd Purdy at this time, but he hasn't been able to come up with anything like that. My thing, my, my, my feeling is, is in the same sentiment that he has. The point of purchasing my, my property wasn't to be a, a publican for the rest of my life, but to actually have a little piece of property on Main Street, and I found an opportunity to do that. And then to see that future become nebulous very quickly is, is very disheartening. It's, it's disheartening also to see, to lose the faith and the trust in the city and with Main Street Organization. And that's probably the biggest issue we have as merchants on Main Street, is the disconnect between the organization of Main Street or the downtown organization and the actual merchants. Clackamas County, Carol, Catherine Comer explained to me carefully that they developed this Main Street program. She worked with it in Canby very well. The, the, the thing that she explained is it was like a three-legged stool, and the business owners and the property owners were part of that three-legged stool analogy. We have a two-legged stool in Oregon City, and it's, it's not a very comfortable position to be in. We have no really, we have, we have no voice, and we have no communication rather, other than upcoming maybe events like a Christmas tree thing or a holiday event. But the real nuts and bolts of the, of the organization is, is thing or a holiday event. But the real nuts and bolts of the organization is primarily a small group of four to five, possibly six, property owners, and we're left out. And this was, this is an evident part of my argument for that. And so I don't know where to go, but I do know that, I don't believe, if I had a showing of hands, I don't want to ask for that, but I don't believe many of you were aware of this. And if you were, if you weren't, it's kind of surprising. It's surprising that the county would work with a nonprofit agency for such a large development and not with the city elders.
Well, that's not surprising.
Let me, I'll interrupt, I'll interrupt just for a moment and just direct it to David Frazier, that was the city involved in the webs piece?
The city wasn't involved in this. In fact, the only correction I can offer based on your first comments, sir, was that it wasn't the city's website. Main Street, Oregon City has their own website and they had a link to their page that you could get to their page, navigate it from our homepage, and we've taken that down now, too. I understand that they have taken their link off, but we've also taken their page off at their request. So you can't get to the Main Street page any longer from the city's website.
I don't know if you want to weigh in in terms of what the city in fact can do with existing properties, Mr. Conkle.
What, can you do?
Yeah. We can't, we can't force property owners, we can't force property owners to do anything with their buildings, so.
We get into the feeling of the eminent domain and much like a train track.
Eminent domain would not apply to that dog. In fact, in Oregon, the only thing we have in terms of eminent domain is actually getting public right of ways where the public's going to actually use it. It's true, something went through the federal courts where the Supreme Court upheld eminent domain to other purposes. Oregon City's, the Oregon State Legislature immediately said, yeah, but not in Oregon. So I'm in the domain issue. I should go to my attorney, actually.
That's correct. In the Kelo case several years ago, the US Supreme Court found no US constitutional block for using eminent domain for eminent, for economic development. However, a whole bunch of states after that, by legislation or by constitutional amendment, restricted the power of local government to use eminent domain for economic development. So you can use it for acquisition of property, for right-of-way libraries and those sorts of things, or for nuisance-type abatement. But right now, you can't use it for economic development.
And I'd like to enforce or emphasize maybe what Larry has spoken through is the sense of disconnect is amplified when I, when the county, when our meeting was over and the county lady apologized and it was very sincere and we felt like she wasn't trying to, there was no collusion with the county. She said that she would email Main Street Organization, who's led by Lloyd Purdy, and have it dismissed, taken off the website at 2:00 on yesterday afternoon. And at 5:00, it was still on, and in the morning, it was, actually at 5:00, that's when they moved it to the front page. Didn't have to click four or five times to find it. It's a beautiful graphic and really good animation.
I'm yet to see it.
Yeah, well, it can't, it's gonna be hard to find it now. And so they, the frustrating thing and what was very eye-opening to myself and many of us merchants is the degree of disconnect and almost kind of a thumbing of the nose to the county and to us merchants who, they weren't asking it to be eliminated forever. They said at this time, there was no permission. They didn't follow the right guidelines. Let's take it off because of the damages that could be done or have been done. And it actually took, I think, four emails by various parties and maybe more that I'm not aware of. And I think that should be taken into consideration when looking at the ramifications of what has happened the last few days.
Nor really go into dialogue, I will point out that Carol Polly is our new representative on the Main Street Board. Briefly, at the beginning of last year, Commissioner Roth was our representative, then I became on it. And I don't recall this, I'm not going to say it didn't happen. I don't recall this being put on the web page coming to the board. I may be wrong, but I just don't recall it. My hope, and well, perhaps let Commissioner Polly take the lead, is open up some good dialogue between you and the current Main Street Board and Mr. Purdy. I would point out, in spite of this issue, some wonderful things have happened on Main Street because of the Main Street program. And my hope is we can resolve these among the businesses down there and the Main Street Board.
Wonderful. I'm sure that's
I am meeting with Lloyd tomorrow, and I will, for orientation for Main Street, Oregon City, and I will definitely let him know about the disconnect and dig into that more, for sure.
We'll look forward to next council meeting, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Give us two council meetings, if you would.
Cheers.
Okay. Mr. Guile, and then, and I ever home, hold that, hold that, sorry.
That's a rough concern to follow. I'm glad I didn't come in between those. My name's Tom Guile from Oregon City Park Place. My first time presenting before Commissioner Carroll, so I'm nervous. Actually, I wanted to comment about Claire Metz's earlier presentation when she put where the senior citizen city is a place where there are no strangers, just people, people you have not met. I thought maybe Rocky had left some ghosts over there during your paranormal conference, because they kept saying how that senior citizen building was haunted.
They were there before I got there.
And he made them all friendly, so there's no issue.
Actually, I'm here on behalf of our Trailview Homeowners Association tonight. This was last minute. They asked me to come up and ask the city if they could look into this. This started back in December when we noticed that our hot water tank in our house was leaking, overflowing, and just a little overflow. And we thought, okay, maybe it's, we need, it's time to replace that. And then it started really leaking, didn't get around to it, and started really leaking out towards the street from there. And we were at our neighbor's house. Theirs was starting to leak. And before we knew it, we were all calling plumbers. And all of our hot water heaters were the expansion, I guess it's expansion tubes or something, the overflow valves were busting. And so somebody went out to the street and they noticed that theirs was at 140 pressure when it's supposed to be at 70. Ours was a little over 90, but now about 85% of Trailview homeowners, all of our water heaters are starting to have problems all at once. And so we've all had to call plumbers. And all we thought was, someone thought the water was pumped uphill, and I said, no, I believe it comes downhill from the water, what do they call it, the reserve up in Barlow Crest. We haven't gone around to the other neighborhoods yet. We have a link in our homeowners association, but we thought we'd want to bring it to the city's attention that has something changed up there on water pressure, or people thought, well, maybe they were starting to do something with the valves into that annexation area if they decide to open that up. But something's happened in the last few months that's really changed all of our water heaters, and it's costing us a lot of money, each of us, for all the plumbers and expansion tubes. We've had to replace the ones at the street. Then that didn't do any good. That's when we went to our hot water heaters. So just thought we'd come and ask if there's been something that's changed.
Did you contact?
No one's, well, nobody knew to until tonight. We said, well, why don't we, because we thought individually that it was just our own problem, until we put it out on the, on our Trailview HOA, like, oh, you did too, and you did. Oh, we're all experiencing the same problem. So we thought we'd, they asked me to come and bring it to the city to see if something's going on or if you have an explanation for it.
Tom, could I make a suggestion?
Sure.
We had this issue several years ago with Clermont. And all of a sudden, everything, our, the top valve started opening and we'd had water coming out all over the place. And Clermont had changed water pressures at the substation at the bottom. So you may look at something that a substation.
Is there one below us, Nancy, or is it the one above? We know you have more problems this weekend than the water pressure, but something needs to be done.
When, what year was that established?
2003, 2003.
2003. My understanding is your water comes down from Barlow Crest reservoir.
What I thought.
And I don't know of anything that's been changed out there, but I can certainly look into it.
Because it's just strange that it all started happening about December time is when it first really, and then it's all been gradual through the whole neighborhood.
We'll take a look at it.
But we'd appreciate it if you'd let us know.
Sure.
That's it. Thanks for your time. Have a cheerful good evening.
Tom, I might have somebody contact you directly.
Terrific. I'll be out of town this weekend.
You're leaving before 8:00 tomorrow night, right?
We're camping on the coast.
Okay, very.
Good job. Good job.
Amber.
Good evening. I'm Amber Holbeck. I reside in unincorporated Oregon City, and I am the Executive Director for the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce. And I just am here to say, the Oregon City Chamber has been very busy recently. We had our Irish Stew cook off last Thursday at Pioneer Community Center, and a big thanks to the staff there, and especially Claire Met. But I wanted to share that we had some incredible support from our city commission in terms of attending, participating, cooking. We also had some city staff involved, a few little anecdotal pieces. In fact, our newest city commissioner, Carol Polly, was one of our professional chefs here, here. And it just so happened that the winning amateur chef happens to be our own city manager, David Frazier.
[applause]
He didn't write that, I can tell. We did, in fact, we had some wonderful stews. It was a great event, fantastic turnout from the community, great music from Lucky Shamrocks who entertained you last, at the last city commission meeting. And it was overall a very nice fundraiser for the chamber, so thank you so much. Be sure to attend next year.
Yes.
And then, coming up Friday, April 6th, there's a luncheon forum. We'll be hearing both the Westland Chamber and the Oregon City Chamber will be hearing from our Clackamas County Commissioner candidates. So you can find information on the chamber website, www.oregancity.org, or through the Westland Chamber as well. It is $20 for chamber members and 25 for non-members. We will be hearing from those candidates that everybody gets a chance to vote on soon. And then certainly last but not least, our annual community service awards luncheon on Tuesday, April 17th, at the Tom Water Room Museum of the Oregon Territory. This is an outstanding opportunity to hear the great service that we have from, coming from our service groups and other nonprofit organizations like the Optimists Rocky, like the Lions Betty, like the Rotary and the Kiwanis, et cetera, as well as the Oregon City School District Top Awards. And so this is really the chamber's way of really paying back to the community and saying, these organizations really, really matter, and this is how we want to let you know that your contributions really mean a lot to our community. So you are invited. Love to have you there and love to have the community involved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for the record, I bought a total of 13 tickets, and I shared them among four people.
We're very deserving.
Three, 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 and four. And if you only won by one ticket.
It's you.
It's me.
I gave my tickets to Commissioner Polly.
Okay. With that, and with that, we're going ahead and proceed on with the regular part of our agenda. Is there anything that anybody wants? I'll alter report from the general, from the, excuse me, from the cassette agenda.
No.
Hearing none. We'll go into our public hearings, which we have none, so we'll go into general business. And we're looking here at ordinance number 12-1002, adopting a revised description of planning file AN and approving election results, annexing certain properties to the City of Oregon City. Mr. Conkle. Now, this is something that's gone to the voters.
Correct.
Yes.
This is just a correction of the legal description to meet Department of Revenue. At our last meeting on March 7th, unanimous, we approved the first reading. We're requesting that you do approve the second reading tonight.
I have a motion for the second reading.
Second.
I heard, I understand now that Commissioner Roth has made the motion and Commissioner Smith has seconded it. Can we have the reading, please?
This is ordinance number 12-1002, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City rescinding ordinance number 08-1017, adopting a revised legal description for planning file AN 07-07, and approving the election results, annexing certain property to the City of Oregon City.
Call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye. With that, and we're going to have to question the appeal of non-conforming determination, and we're having actually a request to continue this to the April 4th. I see no problem with that.
No.
So will be continuing that to the April 4th meeting?
I believe you need a motion.
You might make a motion to do that.
Okay, well, then if he says we might, we better.
Move to proof.
Not move to proof, move to move.
Move to move.
To the April 4th. Very good.
Second.
Second.
Okay, then, then, Commissioner Mom made the motion, Commissioner Smith made the second. A vote, please.
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Motion passes, that's it.
Then we're going on to our next item, I think our final item, in fact, on general business, the first reading of ordinance 12-1003, amending chapter 504 of the Oregon Municipal Code relating to the process for issuing business licenses. I'll go to our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance is coming back to the commission after a substantial revision to basically shorten it and to reduce, I think, the breadth of its impact significantly to one or two sentences. First off, I want to thank the attorneys in the room, both those we paid and those we didn't, for their talents and their cooperation. I mean, I'm a lawyer, too, but I'm not paid to do that, and I really have enjoyed the debate and also the drafting and the suggestions. I think it's just been helpful. I think we actually have a better product as a result of the process. So I'd like, really like to thank those two gentlemen. And I will defer now to the city attorney. You have a couple of different options. I don't have a preference, so.
Mr. Mayor and commissioners, you have seen some email traffic as well as some letters on this ordinance. If you recall, this started in December of last year after there was some discussion over whether a business license ought to be issued to a marijuana distribution center, for want of a better word. The commission took a first reading, and then after some discussion and some objection, particularly by the chamber, the manager pulled the ordinance and entered into some further discussions with the chamber. The result was the ordinance that is before you, which I understand the chamber supports. You have also gotten from Mr. Hunt a substitute ordinance, and I've sent you out an email today saying, both of those ordinance, as well as the version that was sent to you in December, do the job. And this is really your call as to which version of which ordinance you want to adopt. So I suggest you hear the testimony and then decide which ordinance you want to give first reading to.
Okay. We do have three people up. I'm going to call first one of the unpaid attorneys, Kevin Hunt forward, and then Michael Burman. Michael Burman, come on up, too.
Thank you very much, members of the commission. I'm Kevin Hunt. I live in Oregon City. I'd like to thank the city manager and the city attorney for their courtesies last several days and for including me in this process. I think that as a result of the process, you do have a couple of proposals before that are much better than what originally came forward. The focus has been narrowed. Of course, once Commissioner Mom had it referred over to the Chamber of Commerce for consideration, they also had a lot of concerns. We don't have any of those in front of you tonight. What you have is a couple of proposals that really get down to the meat of the issue, and that is, should the city manager be required to issue a business license if the business is illegal? We all agree the answer to that should be no. I'm going to suggest to you that my substitute ordinance is preferable to the other one you have in front of you, and there's two reasons for that. First of all, and this is, this is not, again, as I indicated in the communication today, this is just something that's been lingering in the code for a long time. It's not something Mr. Sullivan drew up. It's just been there, but you have an opportunity to fix it tonight. And that is, the first sentence in the existing code provision is grammatically strange, such that it basically says that if you run a business in Oregon City, you must violate the code. And we don't want it to say that. So I've changed that by breaking it into two, breaking that into two sentences. However, what I would really suggest to you is that we want to get right to the meat of the issue, and that is, should a license be issued to a business that's prohibited by law? a business that's prohibited by law? The answer is no, and that's what my version says. The other version you have in front of you basically imposes, well, I would call it a lawyer's full employment act, because if I represented an applicant, I know what I'd be looking at here, and I'd be looking right at the language in that ordinance. And it basically asks whether or not the mental process of the city manager is reasonable in divining that the thoughts of the applicant for the business license are badly intended for future conduct. I mean, that's just, as I said before, that's kind of Orwellian, and I don't think we want to get into what's in people's minds. We just want clean, honest businesses in Oregon City. And so that's why what I put in front of you just says, "No person shall carry on any business within the city without first obtaining a license therefore, nor shall any person carry on any such business without complying with the provisions of this chapter." And then my proposed language, "No license shall issue to any business prohibited by local, state, or federal law." I would ask that you move and adopt substitute ordinance 121003. Available for any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to have more general questions, but it's not one that you need to answer. Michael Burman.
Short and sweet. Just, I agree with Kevin's version. It's just a small thing, and it's just the semantics of it, and the part of the intent that the, for, we may have a different city manager someday, and we don't know what his intent is. And so leaving that intent thing out, I think this is a cleaner version, maybe a little more simple and more direct, and the noise to signal ratio is very clear on this one. There's, it doesn't leave any room for interpretation or intent. That's basically it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Amber Holbeck.
Don't cringe, you put your name up here.
The circumstances have just changed. Again, Amber Holbeck, representing the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce. I had come prepared sharing that the chamber supports the newly proposed ordinance 12-1003. Knowing that there's a new option in front of you, I would like to say our government and economic affairs committee and board supported this new version. However, we've not yet had an opportunity to see the newest version. And so I think we're definitely on the right track, and we will support these in one form or another. Is that clear enough?
Clear as mud.
Well, that's clear.
So with that, I believe that the chamber will support this more specific wording. We didn't like the speculative piece, and this, I think we'll get to the nuts and bolts of the matter. So thank you.
Thank you.
May, perhaps a little bit academic, but we have had many cases in history where local governments or state governments have actually passed laws or refused to enforce laws of the higher government, and ultimately through constitutional processes and so forth, the local governments, the state governments have been ruled correct in that the constitution was violated either at the state level or at the federal level for reasons that were actually brought up by smaller jurisdictions. I guess that's the way to put it.
I can respond. Just a couple of things. This is totally your call on which of the, at least three versions.
Did you get my version?
I thought there was four.
Sorry?
Did you get my version?
Couple of observations, though.
He said you went to.
In looking at this, you still have discretion being exercised, whether or not it's said to be in the manager or the chief, or you shall not approve if there's a violation of state law. There's still discretion in making that call. That's why you've installed a hearings officer to deal with any of those denials. So I don't share the concern that there's a big problem here. On the, I don't think also that the ordinance is written, so you have to violate it as well as get a license. I think the wording doesn't support that. But any of these is your call. What you should do is decide amongst yourselves which version you want, and I can do with the first reading tonight. If you want to carry it over so the chamber can look at it yet again, you're certainly welcome to do that. And we're here to help.
I think the chamber's addressed their issues.
Did you have a chance to read the other?
I don't know.
I guess it will be read on the first reading. You'll be able to, you'll be able to speak to somebody before the second reading. This time, we're not declaring an emergency, so that won't be a particular issue. Anyway, it's the commission's pleasure. Our attorney has no angst about it, so as you will.
Somebody needs to make a motion.
Okay, I would like to move that we adopt, not adopt, have a first reading for Mr. Hunt's version.
I second that.
All in favor? Oh, no first reading. Shut up, Dan.
What I have to do now is to read the changes in the ordinance.
Okay.
Okay? So, this is, this is ordinance number, substitute ordinance, but it's ordinance number 12-1003, in ordinance of the city of Oregon City, amending chapter 5.04 of the Oregon City Municipal Code related to business licenses. Sorry. Whereas the Oregon City Commission has adopted a business licensing program in the city that is designed to raise revenue as well as to ensure that business can be carried on in a safe and reasonable manner, and whereas the city licensing code does not currently address whether a business can obtain a license for a business that violates local, state, or federal law, and whereas the procedures in the licensing code should be updated to clarify businesses' responsibilities and city requirements, now therefore Oregon City ordains as follows. Section 1, chapter 5.04.060 of the Oregon City Municipal Code is amended to read as follows, in parentheses, additions shown in underlined text, underlined, semicolon, open parentheses, deleted text shown within brackets, close, both parentheses, colon, 5.04.060, license required. No person shall carry on any business within the city without obtaining a license therefore, nor shall any person carry on any such business without complying with the provisions of this chapter. No license shall issue to any business prohibited by local, state, or federal law. I'm omitting the last part because it's not part of the code itself. It's just a mandatory language. The foregoing ordinance was read for the first time at a regular meeting of the city commission held on the 21st day of March 2012, and the city commission finally enacted the same, this blank day of blank 2012. The next time, you'll have it in written form, so I don't need to read it.
I think that when you read it, and it was the existing language, "No person shall carry on any business within the city without," and I think you left out the word first.
Correct.
I'll insert it in there.
Okay, very good. And having, having me that astute of observation.
Good job.
Anyway, the, I'm a slow reader, so sometimes I catch things like that. But anyway, with that, the vote, please.
Commissioner Mom?
I struggle with this, but I will say aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
And Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Having done this, can you address my concern a little bit more fully, the ability of, say, a council coming to the conclusion that even if the council felt that a, for its own reasons, that a given ordinance or law violated the constitution at some level, is the council in a position under this ordinance to ever, okay. So we have that discretion.
No, you, there's two kinds of, there's facial invalidity, which this doesn't do. That would be, all of the applications of the ordinance would be invalid or unconstitutional, or as-applied invalidity, where in a particular case. So if there's a particular case that comes along, you can decide that case based on the constitution rather than the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. With that, I believe, as I turn my page, we are going into consent agenda. Nothing was pulled, so do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Please wait till the motion's made.
I'm sorry.
It was, it was made by Commissioner Smith, interrupted by Commissioner Mom. Commissioner Smith went ahead and finished the motion.
Next time, I'll read it faster.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mom seconded. The vote, please.
Most of the time, you go move to approve. Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
And with that, communications from the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First up tonight, I'm going to call on Nancy Kreshar. We apparently had a clerical correction to an ODOT IGA from the last meeting, and both she and Mr. Sullivan are going to tell you about that.
Mayor and the city commission, the IGA that we entered into ODOT last, at the last meeting regarding the transfer of the section of Main Street between about 8th Street and McLaughlin Boulevard, there was a, an error in the property description. It had said section 10, township 2 South, range 2 East, and it was supposed to say section 31, township 2 South, range 2 East. So we would like you to make a motion to accept the agreement as amended to read section 31.
I'm going to use you at this point.
That's the proper way to do it.
So move to award.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Roth, and without interruption, seconded by Commissioner Mom.
I'm improving.
Vote, please.
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Passes.
Next, I'm going to ask, well, I want to just report that the city is responding to Clackamas County's purchase for property at Red Soils. Most of you know, I think it was about a year ago, the county purchased an additional building and some additional property, and they came in earlier this weekend with our community development department to do a pre-app meeting. And I know this is a little bit of a sensitive subject because that was urban renewal area originally, and the city thought that that was going to be a future employment center in the private sector, and as the county's campus has grown, those hopes and dreams have been dashed, and the investment, to some extent, I guess, goes with that. And so we, I wanted to make sure I reported that to you, that that's what's occurred. Some of our staff was here when that started. I think Nancy, you were one of those, and you had some opinions you wanted to share.
Well, I remember that that area was actually, that land, those lands were given to us by the county to develop as urban renewal property, so that we could develop tax increment for that part of town. The city's urban renewal agency then made all the improvements to develop Red Soils Campus Industrial Park as a subdivision, built Beaver Creek Road, and, and now, two out of, well, actually, two and a half out of the three properties are going to be taken off the tax rolls. So for me, that's just really kind of like, oh, rats, you know, we had this great plan. And I remember David Wimmer and I used to just be so excited about the tax increment that we were actually seeing
Right.
on that development in the Hilltop Urban Renewal District. And now it's sort of, it's kind of disappointing to be going backwards on that. But that's just my opinion.
And I wanted to report on this. NOSI had current information, but when you're interacting or have a chance to interact with county elected officials, it's never, I mean, you have lots of things to talk about. But this is, this is one of those things that, you know, good host, good neighbor kind of relations, you do try to look out for each other's tax base, I think. And I've been a city manager in four county seats, and that's normally, if you want the best relations, you try to avoid, avoid that kind of thing. And in this case, I think the pre-app is for storage or something. So we are losing more of our tax base to that expansion. And just for your, to remind you, I think our last numbers that we ran, if all the county properties in the city were taxed at the same rate that our citizens are taxed, they would be generating almost a million dollars. It's $938,000.
Yes.
Or $938,000 a year forever that would be coming to the city to provide services. So it's a, you know, it's a big impact, a really big impact.
And the original master plan didn't include these properties. It was all on their vacant lands, and now I guess it's more, it's evidently more economical for them to take over buildings that are already there. But again, it's, it's just kind of too bad that, can you...
I guess I would just point out real quick, that it's the Silver Oaks Building, it's 1810 Red Soils Court. It's towards the end of the cul-de-sac, and it backs up to the, to the campus property. That'll be the second building that they've purchased on Red Soils Court. Then you also have two buildings that are on the same side of Red Soils Court that front on Beaver Creek Road. It's on.
Are they going to make one of those buildings the courthouse?
So what they're proposing is approximately 55,000 square feet of storage and 14,000 square feet of office use in the existing, what's referred to as the Silver Oaks Building. But in the two properties that are along Beaver Creek Road, they also have the district attorney, there's an office in there for them, and then another building is a passport office. So you see that incremental creep, which also leads to, what you're going to see is probably a reduction in there, that the taxes on those buildings, because they're leased to a public agency. So you've lost essentially two buildings through purchase, plus portions of two others to lease.
Okay, I missed something in here. You said the county gave us these buildings?
The property.
The property. So how did they get them back?
They bought them.
They're buying them.
From who? From us?
Other property owners. No, they developed it.
Other people bought it.
We developed the Red Soils Campus Industrial Park and, in our urban renewal plan.
Yeah.
And now, and we were, we scrutinized, Doug, you were on the commission back then, or mayor, we scrutinized the development that occurred there to make sure that it would be, it would be of high enough quality and value that we would see good tax increment on it.
Okay.
And that's the only reason why I always get a little, I mean, to me, that was always just, those were some of the first things I did in Oregon City, and it was so well-intended.
It's a little bit ironic, given the fact that we know, we're aware of some library property nearby there that could potentially have been library property.
I wish that was in that particular time.
There could have been some, something built on that, because it was already off the tax rolls. So it's just, it's just part of the challenge of working together.
You're informing us essentially about something that we can't really do much about, isn't that right?
Well, I think you can, you can talk to your county elected officials.
No, no, but what I'm talking about is from the legal aspect. I mean, they purchased the, well, at least that property.
As long as they meet the zone, unless we're willing to change, do a zone change, and that would look, I think at this point, that would look like kind of foul ball.
This is, this is a great time to talk to people that are running for office.
Yes.
Might be a good time to attempt that.
Well, I guess I would just, I would just point out, from the, from the tax assessor in 2011, on the one building alone, which is the only one we had time to look at, was 1810 Red Soils, you know, you've got a, you've got a value of $4 million because they're already leasing part of that out, you know, half of it. So the assessed value, the taxable assessed value is actually just over $2 million. The other two, just over $2 million is tax exempt. The taxes created on the taxable portion, so the $2 million is roughly just under $36,000. That's not all to the city, that's total tax bill. I think ours at 416 is probably around $16,000. But, you know, you've got two and a half buildings roughly that does impact, and that is, it's an incremental creep off of the site into an urban renewal area project.
I'm going to ask you to do a favor, if you would, if you'd email us the, I mean, the increment that we received when we closed the district was quite, was very substantial.
Yes.
The Red Soil, the Red Soils Urban Renewal District was a very successful
Yes.
renewal district. If, if you could email us, how much of that increment disappears? You know, how much increment is there in them? How much of it disappears with the sales of the property? I think we'd have something a little bit more to talk to our county commissioners about.
We'll ask David Wimmer to give you some numbers. We'll ask David Wimmer to give you some numbers.
Yeah, if you could, I think that would help us.
Trust myself with those numbers, but the finance director can do that.
Thank you very much. So, onto the big, the big show this week, the catastrophe. To be, we hope not to be, but I want to remind the commission that our city hall building will be open at that time, but we are going to have minimum staffing here. And my direction to the staff has been that if you're not obligated by union contract or nine-one-one obligations, or you're not a member of the public works department and have to be on-site, if you can walk here and walk to work, you're welcome to come. Otherwise, we are encouraging folks to take vacation days. I'm taking one of those Friday, but I'll be in touch with the emergency operations center throughout the day. And I will be working remotely.
You can pitch a, you can pitch a tent, act your as.
I was gonna say, don't you wanna, like, just stay here and?
I'm gonna come no further south than Sunnyside
[laughing]
on Monday. But I will be, I will be working remotely Monday, and a lot of our people will. A lot of folks have taken off, 'cause it's spring break and they're taking vacations, but we also have a lot of people that are working off-site through our computer system. So, please call if you have any questions, and I will, I'm gonna have a couple of times a day, each day, updates from either the chief of police or the public works director. And if, I'll kinda let you know how it's going throughout the project, particularly if there's any, anything unexpected, like
Yes.
very few angry motorists, that would be unexpected.
[laughing]
But it's, you know, we're gonna get through it, so. The next thing I wanna talk about, I get kinda excited about using technology to enhance our service level without costing a lot more money. So I've asked David Knoll, you probably remember about eight months ago, we unwrapped, we unrolled this thing called OC Request?
Yes.
And since Mr. Guile's still here, I'm thinking about the water pressure question he posed tonight, what a perfect thing that would be for OC Request.
That would be, yep.
I'd like to make a pitch for that, and you can use that remotely, even if you're not at home in the jurisdiction, if you know of the problem, you can, you can even click on it and record this from your cellphone, from the photos on your iPhone, if you want to. So, yes.
And we'd love to have you here, Tom.
But the other good thing about it is, it's a really quick way to get the, all of the right information to the city staff that are directly responsible. I mean, it's, it's probably the speediest tool that we have to resolve complaints. The other thing I like about it is that it allows us as managers to see, to track the comments and the progress. And so David's here tonight, this tool has evolved a little bit, and it's continuing to evolve, and so I asked David to come and give you the current status of OC Request.
Hi, my name is David Knoll, and it's a pleasure to be with, be before you twice in two weeks. I'm almost getting used to this. So, as usual, I have a PowerPoint presentation, and please feel free to ask questions or interrupt as we go along. So, OC Request, we launched about a year ago, and the intent and its purpose is to take comments and criticism from the public and help them point out things that we can address in the city, work on, and give them feedback on how that's going. It comes complete with a frequently asked questions component. You can obviously submit requests with photos, attachments. The customer can track status on the website, and there's a confirmation system and an audit log that we've used to track what correspondence has happened on any particular Up until now, we have had two hundred and twenty-one requests opened, as of yesterday. Two hundred and eleven of those have been closed. That means there's about ten open. Those are either in progress or somewhere in the queue of being worked on. There's four main ways that we can accept requests. One is over the website through this web form. We have a mobile web app that's really quick and, and easy. If you want to download it, just go to the market for either iPhone or Android and query Go Request. We take it over the phone, and staff has been using this over the counter, in person, when there's a complaint that doesn't necessarily fit their department, it goes into the system and gets directed to the right department right away. Here's a screenshot of the web form. It's pretty straightforward, we try to keep it very simple, and that's, that's working. Procedurally, on the mobile app, you have a screen where you can either issue a new request or track an existing request. You see the requests that are in the queue, if you have any, and then details of that particular request, complete with status and any updates that staff has supplied to you. So, here's more of the update portion of it. There was an initial fear when we, well, a few concerns when we first launched this, when we get the women data.
Yes.
That's turned out not to be the case.
Oh, well, there you go.
So far, and I've updated this since the last update that I gave, gave the city manager, only four people have submitted a request more than twice.
Oh, there you go.
And the maximum is four submissions, and they're all valid, well-thought-out concerns that we've addressed. We have a hundred and twenty-four requests for feedback. This is the survey form that gets sent out after a request has been closed. How did we do? What was your experience with the city using this tool? We've only received twelve back. Seven hundred and fifty people have viewed a frequently asked question, and of those views, eighty-six percent had their question answered by the frequently asked question, fourteen percent went on to submit a request. So, from that, we can extrapolate that the frequently asked questions are doing a pretty good job of saving staff time
Yeah.
and keeping the questions being answered by the customer. And of course, managers can be emailed and are being emailed, daily, weekly, updates on open requests as they desire. And there's a few graphical charts that outline some of these stats, which I'll show you now. This is a closer shot of just the last, let's see, the last week of data. You can see that four people viewed a miscellaneous frequently asked question, and then one submitted a request. There's far too many to show in any detail unless you wanna actually log on and see In terms of how people are submitting requests, by far, most of them are through the website, and hopefully that's where they're getting most of their questions answered as well. Eighteen percent over the smartphone, Android and iPhone, and then the remainder is either phone or in-person submissions. I feel like this is a pretty standard distribution of how people normally submit requests in other ways. Here's a summary by department. One of the interesting things that I take away from this is, obviously, code enforcement and public works take the brunt of what you see out in the street that needs to be fixed, according to the citizen. But we can tailor our requests and frequently asked questions and information on the website according to this. We don't need to put as much information out about the library, although I think Maureen does a pretty good job of putting the information on the website, so maybe not as many questions are needed. But the code enforcement and public works, by far, to have the most requests. So we can tailor the information that we put out there based on the feedback that we're seeing from these stats. Here are a couple of screenshots of the surveys that have been returned. We, one of the concerns of having a survey feedback was that, well, all the feedback's gonna be bad, and that's certainly not been the case. We've gotten twelve back, and eleven were superior or good. We had one poor response, and that was from a request that actually referenced a complaint outside the city limits. So we let them know that it was outside the city limits, and we couldn't do anything about it, and they didn't like that response.
Right. Well, because they want you to fix their problem.
And if we could, we would, but
Yes.
it's outside of our jurisdiction.
Go on to Annex.
Tell them to Annex. I love it. Salute, Tom.
So overall, we've gotten pretty good feedback on four different wa, four different ways that we're serving the citizen, including time to respond. I guess in the initial, um, uh, report that I gave to David, I indicated that most of the responses, over fifty-five percent, I believe, were solved within two days. So, just about everything that's coming, well, fifty-five percent that comes in, is solved right away and closed right away. The remainder are closed within that, you know, ten-day window. I think it's seventy-five within four days. I wanted to pat ourselves on the back a little bit. Just recently, we got a, a satisfaction survey back, and somebody was quite pleased. This request was opened for four days and closed, and the response back was, "I wanted to pass along a big thank you to all of your staff for the hard work. Always pleasant, whether on the phone or in-person doing work. Each member has a great attitude and deserves a thanks." So it's nice to get that kind of feedback when we don't normally hear the good news. So to summarize, OC Request streamlines the resolution and feedback process that we've sought to improve. The public can track and be alerted when activity has taken place in the request, on, online or over the phone. Submission of photos and attachments has been a huge benefit. We can actually see, this customer can take a picture of the pothole or of the problem.
Right.
Identification of areas in need of additional resources, and that's probably something we'll be looking at and analyzing these numbers and tailoring a little bit more as we continue to change this resource. And real-time reporting by employees and citizens. We've had a number of employees go out and use the mobile app to remind themselves or to take a picture of something that needs to be reported back in the office. And all this wouldn't be possible without the hard work of all the staff in following through with these requests and giving the citizen feedback, so thank you to everyone here. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Guile.
Can I come up?
Yes, you may. As long as you're gonna say good things.
Yeah. I'm embarrassed, and I feel quite naive, as chair of the CIC, this is the first time I've heard about this.
Oh.
I'm serious. I'm not sure if it's been discussed at city commissions, one I didn't watch, but I'm wondering how it's marketed to the average individual, and I was gonna suggest that, could we have this presentation at the CIC next meeting, or one of the coming meetings, so the neighborhoods can take it back to their neighborhood meetings?
Excellent. Excellent suggestion.
Explain it. Has there been an article in, in Oregon City News about this application?
Yes.
Being, okay, I guess I didn't see that either. I only read the obituaries. But no, I think this is really fantastic. I have Android, and the only app I have is Angry Birds, and I don't even know how to look that.
Maybe that's why you don't know.
But it would be great to have you come to our CIC meeting coming up and tell the rest of the neighborhoods about this
That's a great suggestion.
so they could take it back to all their neighborhoods.
Well, one thing I'd like to point out, if I read the graph, the pie chart correctly, was that the, the web use of it was far greater than the telephone request. I mean, the telephone requests are actually very, very small compared to most of those, most of those categories, so
Yes.
I guess a lot of people know about it.
Yes.
I guess maybe it's, it's by word of mouth that they found out about it, or maybe they saw something, but I thought, maybe a little bit better communication. I know usually you go to the Oregon City website and you look up a phone number.
Right.
And is this, I guess I didn't even look for this on the Oregon City website to see if it's there.
Well, it, it is there, and it's listed under OC Request. I think this is an example of, we have a tool, and it deserves constant marketing and
Absolutely.
re-promotion as it, as we wanna use it more. So, your, your point is taken. It exists, and we wanna use it more, so let's continue to do that there.
It might be wise to publish even some of the statistics for the Oregon City News that are going, let it be known, look at how many people are actually using this, and they're getting positive results, quicker results, and maybe that's a good, write a press release and let the, all the citizens know about that. One of my other questions, is this used for, let's say, abandoned cars, and that would go to the police force, or drunk driver, I don't know?
No, not for police calls.
Is it mainly for city services?
The police calls go through the dispatch center, because we have a different recording and reporting responsibility there.
So it doesn't help them to take a picture of an abandoned car?
Abandoned car, or abandoned car.
Yes, code enforcement. You can definitely use it for code enforcement.
All right. Well, still, it would be great to get that word out, but also to invite you to come to the CIC meeting to tell the neighborhoods about this, just in case they're not.
Anybody, I want to
They're more often.
I have to make a statement. I won't say which, which commissioner was, but a former commissioner had reported an abandoned car, because it had been there for so long. And when code enforcement comes out with a complaint, they look then throughout the area, and they actually cited a, one of, it's a neighbor that he didn't like that had the car on the street, and they actually, he actually flagged, they actually flagged another vehicle that had been there for a long period of time, belonged to, belonged to a neighbor he did like, and he was very upset about that.
No.
But if they come out, I mean, they wanna make sure that they're not dealing with any kind of turf or thing. If you ask them out, they're going to check around the whole area for those issues.
Be prepared.
And I'm not speaking to you specifically, but
Not me, my others.
But the point, the point is, nobody should use that for vindictive purposes, because actually, when those calls come out, then they're gonna check around the area for other problems.
Yeah.
One other question I did have about the results, do you have that by neighborhood, where you, when you get those results, so you'll know, this is this neighborhood association or that neighborhood area? Just wondering if that way you could track where some of the problems are and?
Yeah, these are all geo-referenced, and so we could pull that out by neighborhood or, or other geographic area.
Thank you, this has been great, appreciate it.
The, the example you might recall that we used eight months ago when we did the rollout, the rollout meeting that, that Tom wasn't attending. You're always invited.
Tom, you're always here, you're always invited.
You might recall that, I think that was the same week that William Gifford had emailed me a photograph on his iPhone
Yes.
about a leak up here in the sidewalk near High Cliff. Well, it wasn't then High Cliff, it had a different name. And now he can literally take a photograph of that and forward it to OC Request, and because of the geographic information system, within a couple of inches, it will identify exactly where that is. So we, it's easy to find. The other thing that David did mention, the staff time, it's also saves citizens' time, 'cause they don't have to work harder to get the information, and we will constantly be updating those frequently asked questions, and some of them will get dated after a while. I mean, there'd be times when the frequently asked questions seem rather archaic, and we'll, we'll have to take those off and replace them with new information. And then the other thing I, I like about this tool, you know, sometimes I get the question, I have two other city managers in Oregon, and one in another state that I mentor, they're younger managers, and they will say to me, "Gosh, how do you guys do all that? How do you have a city of thirty-two thousand people and have only the, the number of employees you do and do that?" 'Cause they're struggling to try to do the same thing, and this is one of those examples. I mean, Oregon City has done a lot of outsourcing over the years too, but it's trying to leverage technology, so we don't have to have two hundred and thirty employees or two hundred and forty full-time employees. I think we have actually maybe more than that, if you factor in all the part-time folks, but we have fewer, much fewer, far fewer, full-time employees than most cities our size, and this is one of the ways we can do that.
Right.
And we get more bang for the buck this way from our tax dollars, and we're grateful for David's creativity in bringing this idea forward, so thanks.
Thank you. Very good.
And the last thing on my reports is, gosh, April seventh, I will have been serving your community for two years.
Oh, my gosh.
So it's, wow. So it's time for my annual evaluation, everyone's, everyone's favorite topic, right?
Are you supposed to be first?
Go for it, man, I've been there already. But I have your evaluation packets in here, and Katie Riggs, my assistant, will be scheduling one-on-one meetings with us, so we can go over any of the materials. We did add another feature this year, besides the annual, I call it the GPR, but it's a goals-progress report, and you're used to seeing those now every quarter from me. In addition to that, I, I took a kind of a hint from some of my department heads, who, when I did their evaluations, some of them simply do a, a list, just a short bullet list of one or two or three words to remind me of some of the things they've done in the preceding year, so that they don't have to read the entire GPR. So you have both. You have both of those in here, and the new thing is the short list. That's actually, I think, five pages long. So, there it is, and I look forward to talking to you about that[1767.33] So there it is, and I look forward to talking to you about that.
Thank you.
In a few days. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. A couple of things that I was going to mention, I did so already, that was the Mayor's, Meeting of the Mayors, that's called together by Mayor Ogden from Toowallton during Commissioner Collet's presentation, and also reference to the students coming in as part of our sister city, Tadashina. There was a couple of other things I wanted to do. One was a kind of follow-up in terms of the good feedback you were coming up with on the web in terms of the responses and how well the staff was doing. I wanted to give tremendous compliment to all of those that have been involved in the Jug Handle project. We get copies of the emails that are going back and forth, and they are responding to every question, every criticism that's coming forward, and they are not brief responses. They're addressing the specific questions that are being put forward, and I simply wanted to direct my compliments to you, Mrs. Kreschar, but also, if you would just take them to everybody, either with ODOT or the city or whomever.
Yes.
Because I think we're doing a great job of communicating. The, I'm not going to my other topic yet. I was formally asked to address three groups, and that was the Holcomb Overlook, CPO, Beaver Creek Hamlet, and the City of Malala. And I was very, first of all, I was very happy with the meetings I had, because there was a good bit of feedback, and recommendations had come through. Some of them were already, had been dealt with, but one from Beaver Creek Hamlet, in terms of signage came forward, and it wasn't on the list. You've all been very responsive to the comments that have been made from other jurisdictions, too. The other thing I wanted to talk about, I went to the council meeting in Milwaukee, because Mayor Ferguson is on, I'm going to say this wrong, but the, I'm going to call it the Governor's Stakeholders Group, that's not the title, but dealing with the pasture rail service. And he had sent out an email, I'm sure it came to all of us in the county, that he was going to be speaking about that at his commission meeting, so I went over there. They've taken very, I think they've taken a very close look at some of the recommendations that have been coming forward for the jurisdictions. You may recall that there were two routes being considered. One is the Oregon Electric Rail, is that what it's called? I'm not sure where that goes, but it's a rail system that's not heavily used. And then, of course, our Union Pacific Rail Line. The cities that are along the Oregon Electric Rail don't want it, because it comes down through their core area, and they're not interested in having high volume coming through. And also, the fact that we had, it was pointed out that we had made tremendous investment in our station, and so that we were very eager to have it come through our core area because of that, and because we feel it has future potential in terms of our economic development as well. He did mention that they were actually considering a third route, one that might go into lands that have no rail system at all, perhaps coming along I-5 to some degree, but at least it sounds like that group is also listening to us. And the mayor's going to make a more detailed report to the next C4 meeting.
Oh, good.
Commissioner Mum is our representative there, but there's no reason others of us can't go and listen to his presentation.
Absolutely.
And he seems to be representing us well there in Salem, so I was very pleased with him. They're also very happy with, there are a few things, I know it's our commission meeting, I want to have a discussion about, because I think they're really nice, but he had some very, he said some of those resulted from a person they stole from us, from Terry Bankhead. They said she's doing a tremendous job for them, and he brought that up, that they're very, very pleased with Terry Bankhead. So we lose some people, we gain some good people, we lose some good people, and in the process, sometimes it's us losing good people, other people gain, so it's worked out very well. And that's all I have. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Yes, Commissioner Mum.
What are you calling?
Yeah, Commissioner Mum.
Is it Planning Commissioner?
His name's up, he wants to go first.
Planning Commissioner?
You can go first, I called you.
Planning Commissioner?
Pointe.
Yes, my goodness. I got, thank you.
Was Nancy I blurring at me, and then you decided to intercept it? No, she said no. First of all, we do, we've been very good in filling our positions, incidentally, but we now have three vacancies on the Transportation Advisory Committee. We really should have none, because I think so many of the complaints we get are about transportation issues. So I want to let everybody know that we do have three vacancies on the Transportation Advisory Committee. I'm making an appointment tonight to the Metro Enhancement Committee. Bob Mahoney, as you know, I go, I should preface it.
It's a planning commission.
Planning commission. I said that wrong, too. Does somebody ever want to take over from Patrick? Anyway, to the planning commission. What generally happens is that I have the respective boards and commissions interview the candidates that are applying, and I generally, I look for their recommendations, and I generally follow the recommendations and have, except in one case, which I follow them sort of, there's a three-to-three split, and so I had to make a decision among those. So the planning commission unanimously supported Bob Mahoney to being appointed to the planning commission. He has tremendous planning expertise. He served as planning director for Lake Oswego, am I correct? Plus, a longer history than that. So everybody was pleased, but after you left, it says, you know, that puts three professional planners in our planning commission. So there might be some downsides to that, I don't know, but in any case, welcome to the planning commission, Mr. Mahoney.
And thank you for serving.
Well, he hasn't served yet.
Well, thank you for volunteering.
Thank you for coming. And with that, then, is there anything else I forgot?
Just unless you can read Japanese. These are from Tatson Sheen. So one for each of you.
I think Kathy was going to, did you have something?
Yes, no, no, that was, to finish in my review. I was asking if there was something else I was supposed to say.
I see. Okay.
Yes, this is.
Great.
This is great.
Oh, it's got a map, too. My announcement is, we have meetings coming up called Conversations with Commissioners. It's bringing back something that was here a few years ago. And the first one will be March 29th at 6:00 PM at Jimmy O's Pizzeria. And what the idea behind this is, it'll be myself and Carol Pollitt if Glamour Magazine called, they liked the pictures, and remain.
Sorry.
So if they're not otherwise engaged, we will be at this meeting. But the point is, we realize that three minutes here is a bit intimidating and kind of cuts people off, and we want to really hear what people have to say out there. We want to get the idea of what's going on in the community and make it a non-threatening, you know, City Hall can be a little threatening. And so we want to make it a non-threatening venue and just welcome everybody, businesses, homeowners, home renter, whatever you are in the city. What? Oh, this is my prompter out here. The idea is, I'm going to, it sounds like I'm doing this, but I'm not. I'm going to rotate through with each of the commissioners, I think they've all agreed to rotate through one, we're planning this once a month, and then we'll just start a rotation system of two of us being there at a time, and continue this on so that everybody can have a chance to.
Fair call.
I really like that, Kathy. Thank you for taking that on.
Am I out of the rotation system?
No, you're not. Well, unless you want to be.
No, no, I don't want to be.
Okay, well, I plan on you.
You don't want to be in it, or you don't?
Well, I do want to be in.
And Rocky had an excellent suggestion of having it at the high school once, for the kids to be involved.
Oh, true.
I think it's a great, I think that's a great suggestion, as long as he's not one of the two.
Yeah, I don't think that would be a good idea.
I tend to do that in class. It's amazing how many students ask questions about, and teachers, and everyone else at the school that asks questions about what's going on in the city. It's pretty great to see that, so this is a great, good idea.
Thank you.
Speaking of school, really briefly, again, I did have a group from Tadashina come visit me today at school, and that was a fun middle school class that came and visited me in my class. And I haven't been to Tadashina myself, and I hope to someday. I think when I was in high school, I designed a quilt with quilt squares that represented all the various parts of Oregon City that's hanging somewhere in their town, so I'm kind of excited to go back and see that. So anyway, that was a neat surprise today. So we talked a little bit about the relationship between the two cities. The other thing, people have been commenting and joking a little bit about the whole ghost thing, but I do want to just mention it really briefly, what actually happened the night through the 11th in Oregon City. It was, I do walking tours in Oregon City and hosted a conference this week, the night through the 11th, at the Pioneer Center, and the, as, you know, I'm sure no one's surprised to hear that working with the staff at the Pioneer Center is just amazing, and it's, I think, it was a good, it was a good event to see people coming into the city that, not only from outside the city, but people within the community, that really didn't know the Pioneer Center was there, or what it offered, or what kinds of events happened there. We had a lot of people coming into Oregon City, just really interested in the history of, the history of our city. Had most of the River Shore Hotel completely booked. In fact, the first night, they pleaded with me to host this again. Restaurants were busy in Oregon City. We had people from California, Oregon, Washington, Idaho. And so wasn't really sure how many people would bring into Oregon City, but on the Friday night of the event, I had 70 people on a tour through downtown Oregon City. And on Saturday night, I had a tour group in the pouring rain of about 50 in the McLaughlin neighborhood. And on Sunday, in the rain, little bit of a rain, I had, what, 35, 40, maybe?
Yeah.
Paul took us on a trip out to Kenema Cemetery and kind of talked about the history out there. It was my first time spending a lot of time in Kenema Park since the renovation, and it's unbelievable, it's just great, the signage, when you're talking about the history of the area, and to coordinate that and to see the signage there that talks about the history of the falls and talks about the importance of that place. It's just, I think, you know, it's so important for us to realize that we can market this town and the tourism in this city without a whole lot of overhead, without big fancy museums all the time, and, you know, the ideas that are coming, you know, just from these type of discussions, hosting different types of events, talking about bicycle tourism, talking about all these other things, there's a lot of things that we can do, I think, to bring people into this town. So I was very excited about that. So one, and on top of it, on all that, it just was a coincidence that Grim was filming at Clackmont Park all that weekend, too, so that was a really cool addition for people to kind of go from the hotel down to the park to see what was going on. And it really, it really said a lot, it really said a lot, I think, about our city, too, the people that were coming out of state to our city that had never been here really before, about the things that were going on here. So it was, it was really cool. I have one question, based on the craziness of our weather. In terms of the Jug Handle, the, what is, the timeframe is that we're going to close these four days, and how dependent is that on the craziness of what's going on outside?
Well, the contractor's certain that he will be able to get the work done. The only thing that would be a detriment would be something like an earthquake or a flood. Seriously.
All right, so it shouldn't affect? Okay, good.
Yeah, the flood, huh.
So after, I know, most people will probably not be driving in Oregon City the next several days, but remember that when you do start driving in Oregon City, that it is spring break, and it's a two-week spring break, not a one-week spring break, so there will be kids out on bicycles and walking around the city.
Anybody else?
Well, I, too, would like to say, good job with all the communication on the Jug Handle Project. I was in a meeting in Malala and heard all about how great this is going to be for everybody. So, and I was ill for the work session the other night, so I did watch it, and the Providence Willamette Falls Hospital does have a decontamination tent. So they're all set up for that earthquake.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I love the fact that you're going to do the communicating with the commissioners and rotating it around. That's great.
Well, you mentioned it. If anybody wants one of these to put up someplace, I've got extras.
Are they getting us our new photos?
And that's all I have.
I have one thing. On the last two Fridays, I've had orientation with the different city departments, and I'm glad they were split into two half-days, because one day would have been way overloaded. But I wanted to thank all the city staff for taking time with me. It was very helpful, and thanks for answering all my questions, and I feel like I'm up and running, and.
That's great.
A lot of catching up to do, but thank you guys, too, for being so welcoming.
Thank you.
I think Nancy Kreschar has one last thing on the...
Yeah, you know, I wanted to, I wasn't going to make a big deal out of this, but the more I sit here thinking about the number of partnering agencies we have on this that is looking after this community and the region the next, over this four-day weekend, we have, we're going to have 24-hour Oregon State Police coverage of the highways nearby. Oregon City Police Department is out in full force with reserves. Of course, Public Works, and the County Traffic Team is going to be out 24/7, well, not seven, 24/4, to take care of all the county signals. ODOT traffic's going to be at all the ODOT traffic signals, adjusting them as needed. ODOT Operations is going to be out in the, and with their traffic response, their incident truck. And they'll have an EOC open, the ODOT Center for Traffic Management Operations in Portland will be open 24 hours a day. And we also have their public information officers available. And I think, you know, it just makes me feel pretty proud to have so much support from all of these other agencies, and, you know, it's our project, it's a huge project, it's a regional project, but still, I just wanted to really give credit to all those people for coming and supporting us and looking after the community.
It's 24 and 4/1/6.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll leave it to the statistics.
Anyway, with that, I think everybody wants to get out of here. So, thank you, Mary.
Do we have an executive session?